And we'll have the Rabbi come up. We're gonna start. Okay, welcome. And here is our wonderful Rabbi, Corin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's fun being invited to the pulpit where like my day job brings me, but no, you know, and you may have heard me say this before, but when, you know, Temple Emanuel has always seen as important the civic role that we play. And this was true really from our earliest moments, you know, starting in 1907, but especially as we had our first, our first facility that was built in 1910, when we expanded and built our facility in 1923. By the way, all this is from what people told me, okay? But, but over 100 years ago, our congregational space on Green Street also served and still does civic functions. But especially when we came out here to the northwest part of Greensboro, keeping our roots still in our downtown historic site, one of the reasons that we built with the type of spacing that we have right now is precisely so that we could host events like this. And, you know, over the years, we've taken that civic responsibility very seriously. This is up and above, I would say, you know, our involvement in, in community affairs and advocacy, but really serving the civic function. So that we have had candidate forums, I'm gonna go with that as today's plural of forum, over the course of many decades here now that we've been blessed to be here for, for over two decades. And, and tonight to have this educational opportunity to learn about, more about city government, which is, I think, where most people say the rubber really meets the road is when it comes to city government. And therefore, again, it is such an incredible blessing for us to be able to take these steps in this direction. So join me in giving a big round of applause to Catherine, as well as everybody who's been involved in setting up these, these opportunities and keeping them, I would say, nonpartisan, right? Which is also a bit of thing so that people from across our political spectrum can feel like they have the opportunity to learn from candidates and to learn about important civic functions. On that note, I'm going to give this back to Catherine and really looking forward to tonight's, to tonight's session.
Okay, good evening. Welcome. And I'd just like to say, we are recording this online and it can be found at TE Greensboro or is...
Facebook.com.
Yes.
One slash.
TE Greensboro. So please look at it on Facebook, because this is gonna be a really interesting conversation. So welcome to What Does City Council Do and Why Should I Care and Vote? This program is sponsored by AAUW, the American Association of University Women, and Temple Emanuel Social Action Committee. Thank you for coming. It's good that you are here if you have voted or never voted in a Greensboro City Council election. It's good that you are here if you don't know anything about what Greensboro City Council does. It's good you are here if you don't know what Greensboro City Council oversees versus the county commissioners. If you said yes to any of that, then this is the place that wants you. We are going to talk about tonight, what we're talking about tonight doesn't exist online and needs to be explained, regardless of your political preference, and we don't talk about that when we talk about city council because it's nonpartisan, or what's happening in Washington or in the State House. Here in Greensboro locally, you have a major voice and everything begins locally. You'll realize tonight that the city council decisions affects your day-to-day life in a big way. Maybe that's why 29 residents ran this year for the nine city council seats, and last year 38. At the end of this program, you will understand what these city council leaders did in the past, how they thoughtfully considered your future, and hear examples of how decisions they made are now part of our city life today. It's all part of a plan that's connected from mayor to mayor. It's good that you are here, and I wanted to just point out that the page that you have on, on the other side, it lists all of this information that's up here, but city council's not responsible for public schools, mental health, or social services, courts and jails, that's county commissioners. The Greensboro Council is responsible for police and fire department, water and sewer, waste recycling services, public transportation, public libraries, public parks and recreation centers, First Horizon Coliseum Complex with the White Oaks Amphitheater, Greensboro Erotic Center, public parking, street maintenance, and the city manager. Now I'd like to introduce our panel. So if you will come up now, please come up. Then let's thank them for coming. So to my left, the Honorable Keith Holliday is the 45th Mayor of Greensboro. He was elected in 1995 as an at-large council member and served as mayor pro tem before becoming mayor in 1999. He served four terms as mayor, retiring in 2007. He served 12 years on the Greensboro City Council. Before becoming mayor, he was the Vice President of First Citizens Bank. After serving mayor, as the mayor, he became the Chief Executive Officer for the Carolina Theater and now Director of Development for DGI with the Downtown Greensboro, Inc. Now I'd like to introduce the Honorable Nancy Vaughn, who is our 48th Mayor of Greensboro. She was elected to council in 1997 as a District Four member and left in 2001 to raise her daughter Catherine, who is a fabulous young woman, and returned in 2007 as an at-large member through 2013. Mayor Vaughn served under five mayors, Mayor Allen, Mayor Holliday, Mayor Johnson, Mayor Knight, and Mayor Perkins, before deciding to run for office. That's a lot of learning. And was elected mayor in 2013 with 59% of the vote. She has served for 20 years on the Greensboro City Council. Mayor Vaughn serves as the, with the first woman mayor and the first African-American mayor, and presently is Greensboro's longest-serving mayor. The Honorable Justin Outling was appointed in 2015 to the Greensboro City Council to represent District Three, replacing Zach Bethany. He ran for election in 2017 and won, and he was a council member from 2015 to 2022. He served seven years on the Greensboro City Council. The news and record in 2015 said Justin Outling, the newest Greensboro City Council man, is focused on sustainable solutions. Justin is a partner and director of diversity and inclusion at Brooks Pierce Law and focuses his practice on business litigation and criminal defense. That's a lot to get out. So let's welcome him as well. Okay, so we're gonna get right down to it. And I'm gonna start with you, Keith. So with your tenure, we saw changes to our troubled economy. Can you talk a little bit about that time? From what I read, in 2000, our community lost more jobs than any other area in the entire state. We lost 90,000 jobs. And that was more net jobs than the entire state. So talk to us about what you did for the economy during that time. And I know FedEx was one of them, and just take it from there.
Thanks. I appreciate that, and I want to certainly welcome everyone here tonight. And also thank Temple Emanuel and the Rabbi for giving us this opportunity. It's always a pleasure coming out here. I had to do a double take though when I got out of the car because I could have sworn those swans and the water feature were real. I mean, I just kept looking, I'm waiting for the net to move and it just, it didn't. But they looked good. They really did. Well, thank you for this opportunity. It's been a while since I've spoken to a group about city council, and, but, you know, once it gets in your blood, it never really goes away. And yes, it was, it was an interesting time in the 2000 area. I actually started in 95. And if there is some aspiring council people in the, in the future in the room, let me just tell you, things are a little different now. When, when I ran in 1995 for my first time, I put my committee together in 1993, two years earlier. That seems to be more of a two-month head start these days. And that's important because prior to that, you, I was on the zoning commission and different things, trying my best to learn rather than do so much on the job training while I got there. It was just, it was just too important. But I will also tell you that, and this is, I think my two colleagues here will agree, the importance of the city council goes without saying. I've always, always made my speeches to say that I'm actually, the council more important than the President of the United States. I'm gonna affect your, your life more than the President of the United States. And that may seem contrary to especially today's world, but the reality is if, you know, you back out of your driveway and your car falls into a pothole in the street, you're probably not gonna call the President of the United States, okay? You're probably gonna call the mayor to get that fixed, or your garbage didn't get picked up, or some other municipal problem that you dare say that we could even have trouble going into Harris Teeters without getting out without several complaints from the, from the people, because that's how much we affect your life. And that's why it's so important to pay attention to council policies, council members running, experience, judging them on what, because once you get them, they're, they're, they're there for four years. She mentioned my terms, I actually only had two-year terms. That was changed after I left office, and for some good reasons, and at the same time, once you elect somebody for four years, you got them for four years, right? So to that extent, things do matter. I will tell you that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a little bit, I wanna, I wanna make sure I've got my notes here correctly, so forgive my glasses. There was a lot going on from 95 to 2000, end of 2007. We were in a major, major transition. Those jobs were real, they were gone. Obviously, it was tobacco, it was furniture, and it was textiles. And frankly, there was a lot of depression. I mean, there was a lot of people who felt like, boy, Greensboro was really lagging behind. Raleigh and Charlotte were taking off, and it was just, it was very concerning, and a lot of eyes were pointing toward the council as to what are you gonna do about it? Let me also take a moment and make sure everybody understands our form of government. We've got a, what is considered a weak mayor form of government and a, and a manager form of government that actually runs the city. We've got a professional who is running the city. Us mayors and council members, we don't run the city staff, where at least we're not supposed to, all right? And, and we're not professionals. What we basically do is we set policy. We create the vision of what we want the city to look like now, next week, and 10 years from now, and we expect the professional staff led by a manager to make that happen. So kind of keep that in mind when it comes to fixing issues and fixing problems. When we were going through the transaction, transition, and it's interesting because everybody had ideas. We came together with the idea that, let's start by looking at some other successful areas. And led by the Chamber of Commerce, we put a lot of junkets together, and we went to Greenville, South Carolina, Oklahoma City, we, I think it was Richmond. There were several efforts to go out and see how other cities are doing it that have made that transition. It lost a lot of jobs. How did they reinvent themselves? And at the onslaught of about 2000 was when the famous Action Greensboro, you've all heard about Action Greensboro. That's when we created that. We knew that the city government couldn't do it on its own. It just, we didn't have the means, we didn't have the funds, we didn't have really the bandwidth, and we knew it was gonna have to be a team effort. And a lot of the local foundations, example, Community Foundation, the Bryan Foundation, the Weaver Foundation, the Semler Foundation, came together, pooled a lot of money and said, with the very least, what we need to do is create some, some, some impact projects that people could feel proud about, and also, most importantly, let the outside world, especially the corporate outside world, know that Greensboro has turned themselves around, creating a new advanced technology type of mindset, and that you can bring your company in here and not only just have workforce by way of education, but actually have something for your employees to do after 5:00 and on weekends, something really special. With that in mind, we, we did several things. We, the, of course, the Action Greensboro projects, for example, your baseball stadium, the Grasshopper Stadium, believe it or not, there was a referendum to even have that. There was probably a third of the people in Greensboro who had signed petitions to say, we don't want this new stadium, right? There was a referendum on it. And it was real interesting because to vote for the referendum, to vote for not having it in the negative, you had to vote yes. If you didn't want to go, if you wanted the baseball stadium, you had to vote no.
Oh, how confusing.
Made it a little tough when it came to getting there in front of, in the booth. But it did win, it won 2 to 1, and of course, you see the results of it. And now, I don't believe you could ever find anybody who voted against it, even though there was thousands that did. The baseball stadium was a good start. That was pushed a lot by the Bryan Foundation, the law school, Elon Law. We came together with a partnership and created the Elon Law School from the old library that I grew up going to as a kid. And as you might imagine, having a law school in the middle of downtown, that was a pretty big deal, while it was only 300 students. But again, it sent that right, that good message. Then, of course, we created Center City Park. Center City Park was metal doors and several small shops and things, and I remember when it was torn down and we, we had that big space, people kept saying, well, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Well, a group of private people came together, raised the money, created that beautiful water feature there. And again, it just accented how beautiful the city could be. It showed a city on the move. Eventually, of course, we had LeBauer came in right behind it. But that was sort of a, a real kickoff to our mindset. We needed to really show the citizens of Greensboro that, that we could pick ourselves up and sort of reinvent ourselves. Why was that important? We were pretty down in the droughts because we were out of water. We were going through a major drought. I remember having to stand up in front of a lot of crowds and tell people that, you know, you couldn't sprinkle your yards anymore. All the yards turned brown, and man, did we catch it. They didn't like it at all. Even having to tell them people that when you started to brush your teeth in the morning to turn the water off in between, I mean, just the simplest things because we were so stricken, we didn't have Rendelman Lake at the time. That was a big effort. And if you've ridden by 421, I mean, excuse me, 220, you've seen that incredible lake down there that really took away all of our water needs. Why was that important? Because major companies, major industry needed water, especially in manufacturing bases. So again, a look for the future. We also needed to do something with that water, all right? Yes, it goes through our companies, it goes through our bodies. What do we do with that water? We didn't have a natural water source in Greensboro. We didn't have a river and a creek, right? Buffalo Creek. So we had to have the ability to purify that, so we expanded the Osborne Treatment Plant, something that's not very sexy at all, but incredibly important, because without that, you know, a city's gonna stop. And that's one of the things probably in the future is gonna have to happen.
Let me stop you for a minute. Okay, so...
Yeah, yeah.
No, that was terrific, wasn't that terrific? You're beginning to see the picture of how one thing connects to the next thing to the next thing. It's like a plan that continues to occur. But I wanted to mention some of the highlights. You know, in 1998, there was a new library that was open, okay? Also FedEx came and picked Greensboro for a $300 million air cargo hub, okay? You opened Griffin Community Recreation Center and the Catherine Price Bryan Family YWCA. And then there was Taught, and the, there was a renovation of the Depot.
Yes.
That was big news too. But in addition to that, there was conversations about the downtown Greenway, okay? And there was conversations about the Loop.
Well, we actually started the planning process at that point, and it was nice to have the head of the North Carolina Department of Transportation's board member, Mr. Galyon, who really made a difference not only in funds for the Depot, and I challenge all of you to go down and see the Depot if you haven't seen it in a long time. It was incredible. But I'll, I'll give you a real quick look. You're able to find out what goes on now because of something that happened in, we created Channel 13, all right? Otherwise, you had to come down and read in the paper the next day what went on at Castle. Now you can just tune in from your, you know, your soft, easy chair at home and, and watch a council member. One of, one of my loves is Downtown Greensboro Incorporated. We created Downtown Greensboro Incorporated in 96. There was a need to focus on downtown. Downtown's were coming back. It was dead about then, I mean, just super dead. And we knew that city could not take the time to focus on it along with everything else in Greensboro. So a nonprofit was created. It was a model that we got from the rest of the, around the country, and sort of, it really made a difference. The library's been mentioned, FedEx, gosh, let me tell you what it was like going out to, to eastern, western Greensboro and trying to tell folks that it was gonna be okay for planes to be taken off at 2:00 in the morning going right over your house.
Oh, my gosh.
A lot of battles, a lot of unhappy people as far as that's concerned. But that FedEx was really a hallmark to show that for FedEx to pick us of all the eastern areas, that was pretty important. That's when RF Micro came about. We did a lot of major incentives for RF Micro. Painter Boulevard was, the planning and everything started at that point. Certainly Rendelman Lake. Where you are right now, let me tell you about that. Incredible fight.
Well, maybe Nancy should tell that story. Maybe Nancy has to tell that story.
Well, as a matter of fact, I was gonna allude to her.
Okay, okay.
We, we talk about activists sitting to my left. Jefferson Pilate had 400 acres, all out in here.
Okay, now we're gonna let Nancy tell that story.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna give her, we're gonna give her that. We're going to give her, we're going to give her that. Let's talk, one more thing. Because Nancy, Nancy Vaughn was on the city council when Keith was there. She was there two years with Carolyn Allen, and then two years with Keith. So a lot of what he's talking about, she was involved in all of that.
Yeah.
You, you remember all of that. And, you know, and you opened the nanotech school, which was a really great investment. Maybe Nancy would like to talk a little bit about that project. It was, it was a coordinated effort with some of the colleges, right? Yes, it was, with UNCG and A&amp;T, okay? And so then Honda Jet arrived. Honda Jet arrived. But Nancy, maybe you'll tell us a little story about the, what happened with Jefferson Pilot.
So I, first, I want to say thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out. We know that you've got a lot of places you could be. We're happy that you're here. And I want to thank Catherine for putting this information together for all of us. This is something that I'm going to use for a long time to come. I didn't realize that we had done so many things until I started going through the list that she provided. So, thank you so much.
It's quite a legacy.
Well, you know.
And Keith, yours was quite a legacy, too.
I, I've been honored to be able to work with both of these gentlemen. And everything that's been accomplished has been a team. It's not one person. And it's not even just the city council. It is the city and the Chamber of Commerce and a whole bunch of different people. But how many people lived here, let's say, in 1995? All right. So then, you remember what New Garden Road looked like. It was county agricultural. There really wasn't anything out there. Jefferson Pilot had a, a, it was really kind of a campground for their employees. And I came home from work one day, and I noticed a rezoning sign in my neighbor's yard. And so I called up our planning and zoning, and I made a phone call that changed my life. And I asked them what was going on. I didn't really understand this rezoning sign. And it turned out that properties all along New Garden Road, there were over 1,000 acres of property that were going up for rezoning at once, six different parcels. The Jefferson Pilot property was 616 acres, which was the, the biggest property. And so we got a group together. There were five of us who kind of spearheaded it. But there were hundreds of volunteers throughout the community who got involved. And so we decided we were going to go down, and we were going to fight City Hall. And we lost all six rezonings. But it was an amazing, it was an amazing experience. So there was something called a citizens-initiated petition. And what you had to do was collect 25% of the number of people who voted in the last city council election. At that point, we needed 15,000 signatures. They had to be notarized, and you had to do it in 30 days. And so what, what we did was we had a form, and maybe 10 people would sign the form. But we had to watch all 10 people sign them, and then we had to notarize that, that we saw them do it. And then when we got all the signatures together, we got 17,000 signatures in 30 days, we brought them to the city clerk. And she had to say that they were all city residents, that they were registered to vote. She had to be able to read their writing. If somebody's name was John, and he went by Bubba, that was, that was discounted if he wrote Bubba instead of John. But we got, we got the 15,000 signatures that were needed. And what that would do, it was going to make the council revisit their decision. So I think the chances were pretty good that if they saw that there were 17,000 people who signed this petition, that they might reconsider what was going to happen over on the Jefferson Pilot property. So I go into work a couple of days later, and I get a phone call, and it's a reporter, and they said, so how do you feel about being sued by Jefferson Pilot? I'm like, what? And so they sued the five of us, who were the petition committee. And we were fortunate. We did have an attorney who represented us pro bono. He got us through the first, he got us through the first hearing. And then what happened was Jefferson Pilot said, let's sit down and let's, let's talk about it. Some of the things that we asked for during the rezoning process was that property would be put aside for a park. And we were told there will not be a park. We have to sell this land for the best and highest use. And then we said, well, what about a school? You know, we could use a school. And they were like, nope, there's not going to be school out here. So we sat and we talked to them over a number of weeks. And ultimately, what happened is they reduced the density. They did put 26 acres aside for a school, which is why we have Jefferson Elementary. And they put 100 acres aside for us to raise money to have a passive park, which is what we have down the, down the street. We were very fortunate that the Piedmont Land Conservancy, Conservancy raised the $2 million that was needed to buy that park land. We were also very fortunate that the Hebrew Academy bought 100 acres. Of course, we're not sure what's going to happen with that property right now. But, so what happened on the Jefferson Pilot property was very different than what was originally planned for. And I got to tell you, I'm still tired. That took a lot of work. You know, three decades later, I'm still trying to catch up.
That is an amazing story. And that's how she ended up getting onto city council. We have to applaud this. This was, this was really an epic.
But again, that was, that was really the city that made that happen. Because there were hundreds of volunteers, and the city came out. And we did drive-through petition drives. We'd stand in a parking lot, and people would come. And everybody showed up, and it was great.
And I will add, the original plan that JP wanted to do was an 11-story hotel right on the corner. And this is the biggie, a mall, all right? You would have a mall out there on, on New Garden now if we hadn't had this thing bubble up to the point of having the, the people making the difference.
Yes. And that's why you have a voice. We said that in the beginning, because you do locally. You really do have a voice. That is a fabulous example. So I want to go into your time in office a little bit, if you don't mind. So I just wanted to start out with like, how, in terms of economic development, you took us from the description of what Greensboro was to be a, a city of aviation, and with the largest economic development project in North Carolina history, Jet Zero. And Boom came, and Marshall Arrow came, and Honda expanded, and the largest investment in electric battery plants by Toyota, and electric vehicle chips plant by IQE Semiconductors. And that created 18,000 jobs. So I just want to applaud you because you're retiring for this incredible, and again.
And you were there, too, Justin? Yes, he was. And it's important that this is, it was a team sport. It was not one person. It was not the council. It was the county. It was the EDPNC. And one of the things that I think were most important was the Economic Development Alliance, which was something that the chamber put together when we, when, we had asked the Greensboro Chamber to be a little bit more aggressive. And they reorganized, they hired Brent Christensen. We are so lucky that he decided to come here and help us grow our community. And he reached out to the Chamber in High Point. You know, I think we can all attest to the fact that I don't think Greensboro spoke to High Point. I don't know what was in the DNA, but for some reason, even though we're right in the same county, we never communicated, we never socialized. And Brent reaching out to High Point really made a big difference. And the county commissioners are right across the plaza. We'd see them, we'd wave, but we really wouldn't work with them. And the Guilford County Economic Development Alliance brought all three entities together. We met every other month. Jason, Justin was on that committee as well. And what happened, what we did differently is when somebody would say they wanted to come to Guilford County, instead of us bidding against High Point, we would look at Guilford County and come up with the best sites to show the end user. And we all went together. And it made a huge difference. And a lot of these large companies that have come, came here said it was, one of the things that really attracted them was the collaboration between the three units. And it actually has extended to Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. We have a much better relationship with them than we ever did. And it was good because we weren't bidding against each other. They were getting the very best product that they could get. Keith mentioned infrastructure. You know, for, for many years, it looked like there wasn't much going on in the city. But what we were doing is we were laying the infrastructure. We made sure that there was water and sewer and the, and the streets. And we were very fortunate that we had Doug Galyon, that he made so much of those streets happen. So for, for years, we were laying the groundwork for these announcements. And some of you will remember that we were, we were the bridesmaid at the Toyota Mazda. We were really sure that we were going to get it. We worked real hard. Jim Melvin spent an awful lot of money through the Bryan Foundation, putting all that property together. And really, up until the, the night that they made the announcement where Toyota Mazda was going to go, we were still sure that we were going to get it. We actually bought an extra 50 acres that night. And then the next morning, they announced they were going to Huntsville. And when Brent called me and said, you know, they're going to Huntsville, I thought he was joking. I mean, it was a bad joke. But like, I couldn't even wrap around that we, we didn't get this. And then he just said to me, I'm, I have to hang up now because I have to go tell Mr. Melvin. He said, and I've got to tell him in person. But what happened is we started meeting every month and looked at that property. And we got the feedback from the site selector saying, what did we have to do? What would have made this more attractive? So we made plans with Duke Energy for them to move some power lines. And you could only move them twice a year. But we got that moved. The power lines were moved. We had a, the railroad became a part of this project, and they were able to get that spur in there for Toyota. We really did a forensic accounting of what we should have done better, and we did it all. And so when Toyota came back again, they were like, wow, this was everything that we wanted. And this is how we got the Toyota battery manufacturing. Very similar story when Boeing was looking for a new location. And I really think that Boeing said they were looking for a new location, but they were really using it against the, the union. When Boeing decided to stay where they were, the, the folks at the airport really started looking at what could we have done better? They built the, the bridge to the other 1,000 acres. We got a new, thanks to Kay Hagan, a new air traffic control, really looked at that and said, what could we do better? And that's one thing I think that the city did really good, is we didn't just give up. We dug in and said, how can we make it better?
Wow. That's an amazing story. Okay, I'm going to go do a little time traveling here. So in 2010, the International Civil Rights Museum opened. And we're going to backtrack. Any of these topics you want to talk about, I'm just going to list them, okay? So have at it, okay? But in 2015, there was the National Folk Festival, which became the North Carolina Folk Festival. In 2021, they opened the Stephen Tanger Center for Performing Arts. This was, and, and the city of Greensboro was growing. 40,000 more people between 2013 and 2023. So arts and cultures became a significant driver. So if you'd like to talk about any of those endeavors, I would, we would love to hear.
Yeah, I, I think the Stephen Tanger Center was probably the biggest thing that we were able to accomplish. And that was started by Matt Brown and Robbie Perkins. And they were the ones who talked about moving it downtown. We were very fortunate that the private sector stepped, stepped up and really paid for half of the Tanger Center. I, I don't think you would find another facility that was built with half private dollars. The half that the city was responsible for, we paid for with, with parking revenue, a ticket tax, and then the CVB funds. So our goal was not to have a drain on property tax. And we've been very fortunate. Since Stephen Tanger Center opened after, after COVID, we were supposed to open the Tanger Center on March 20th, 2020. I mean, it was unbelievable. 531 days later, it finally opened up. Once it opened up, that first year, we made $500,000. We thought we would lose money for the first three years. We have continuously made money since it opened and made more money year over year over year. We made $1.7 million off of the Tanger Center last year. But it, again, it has to do with the way the city stepped up. It wasn't just a, it wasn't just a city-city project. It was because of the great donors that we had.
And I think it's an, it's an excellent point that Mayor Vaughn has made. Anytime you accomplish anything of note, there are always going to be lots of people, lots of groups, and lots of organizations involved. The key thing, and I think kind of what brings us to the subject of this evening, is what is the role of your city council, your city government in that? How can they uniquely contribute to wonderful things happening in our communities and our lives? And so the Tanger Center, I think, is a perfect example of that. You know, the city didn't do it all by itself, but city leaders helped cast a vision. They helped prioritize in terms of city resources that but for that vision, but for that commitment, that prioritization, you wouldn't have the Tanger Center. You wouldn't have the real draw to our community, the additional economic development. And just like with regard to the Tanger Center economic development, city government does that in so many different areas of our lives. So over the course of the past 10 years, there's been significant work on essentially creating opportunities more, for more fair and equitable housing. There's been regulations with regard to discrimination and prohibiting different forms of discrimination in our community that's not otherwise prohibited by state law or federal law. And so really, I think, you know, this program is a perfect opportunity to share and for all of us to learn about the breadth of the unique impact that our city government can have with good vision, good prioritization, good leadership, always in partnership, but an essential part of making our community better.
And I heard that Tanger, originally, there were some people that wanted to do it at the Coliseum. And then some people said, no, it's got to be, I think it was Robbie, who said, it's got to be downtown. So.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was that. There was a pull, pull and a push from that perspective, no doubt about it. You know, I, I want to just echo a little bit of what was recently said, where we, we talk about that, that vision and, and the leadership piece. Well, guess what, guys? The best is yet to come. And, and a lot of people will tell you, they really like Greensboro the way it is. We don't want it to change. We don't want it to grow. You got to grow. And you're either growing or you're dying in, in the United States these days. If you sit still, everybody's going to go past you. And from the point of view of the importance of the city council and why we all have to vote and focus on city council leaders is because truly, the next 10 years, you won't, the things that have happened in the last 20 years are going to pale in comparison to what's going, going to happen, the growth that's going to happen, the changes that are going to take place. Why? Because everybody in here who has a child or a grandchild or somewhat young person is close to them, when they go off to school, when they go off to college, you want them to have the opportunity to come back here and go to work. Well, they couldn't do that in 2000. They just couldn't. They were all going to Raleigh, Charlotte, Atlanta. Now, we're making that door open so that there's enough opportunity for them to come back and live a life, not just to raise a family, but to actually have a career.
And an income, and a great income from the jobs.
I will, I will say, because they are both horribly modest people, as a non-mayor on this panel, I would say it's not necessarily going to happen, but the opportunity is there for it to happen. And that brings us to the reason why it's so important to learn about candidates and what your city council does. Our community is primed for excellent things. But just like the Tanger Center, just like water and sewer infrastructure, those are all decisions that have to be made for the great things to actually occur. And so it's a tremendous opportunity for these things to happen. I think we're primed for them, but it really goes to the import of electing leaders who have a vision, have a prioritization. Because just as we made Because just as we made investments in infrastructure, water, for, for example, for which if it weren't there, there would be no Toyota Mazda, there wouldn't be no, or excuse me, Toyota, there wouldn't be any number of companies, other decisions could have been made that kind of precluded us from being in, you know, in the place that we are and the opportunity to be successful. So lots of calls for optimism, but you know, optimism alone doesn't get the, the job done.
But I want to just kind of point out that, you know, they're responsible for, for public parks, okay? So during this time in office, the Carolyn, the LeBauer Park came to be. The Ruth Wicker Tribute to Women, which Mayor Vaughn was just added to that. It locate, it's located in Barbara Park. If you've never been there, it's a fantastic, it's, it's a standalone honoring environment for the accomplishments of women. So it, that, that came to be. The Windsor Chavis is coming in the pipeline. So in terms of parks, do you want to talk, anybody want to talk about Windsor Chavis a little bit about how terrific it is?
That is going to be amazing. It's where the old Windsor Recreation Center was across the street with the Chavis Library. It will probably rival the Tanger Center when it comes to cost and, but it is going to be absolutely fantastic. And it'll be a game changer for East Greensboro. It'll not only be a library and a recreation center, there'll be, Cone has agreed to put in a medical facility there, which is really important because that's kind of a medical desert. There will be teaching facilities, there'll be a, a teaching kitchen, wonderful amphitheater, beautiful ball fields across the street. The tunnel under Gate City Boulevard is being redone. There, you know, we paid to have it designed. The design is fabulous. You can see it online. If we didn't build it, somebody else was going to build it. We are very grateful that the taxpayers passed the $50 million bond, which was really going to pay for the majority of that. Cone, Cone gave in some additional money. The county actually contributed $15 million, which really says a lot because the county doesn't usually contribute to the city all that much. So we are very grateful that they use some of their A R P funding to help make that become a reality. But it is going to be a gathering spot. It'll be wonderful that kids will be able to go there after school. It's really hard to explain the impact that that is going to have. And it's probably two years off. There'll be a lazy river inside the facility. And of course, there'll be basketball courts and things like that, but it'll.
And a library.
It will be something that the rest of the country is going to say, wow.
Yeah, outstanding. Okay, so I just want to move on a little bit to talk about your responsibility also for the Coliseum and all the actions that happened at the Coliseum. So in 2011, the White Oaks Amphitheater was built. In 2011, the Greensboro Aquatic Center was built. And because of that, we had incre, and the, and the Coliseum complex was renovated. They did a $24 million renovation to that as well. But because of that, professional sports events came to Greensboro in a huge way. I mean, we had the 2015 U S Figure Skating Championship. The, in 2015, we had the U S Gymnastics Championship. We had, in 2019, we had the A A U Junior Olympic Games. I mean, and we created a couple of sport teams. Maybe, would anybody like to talk about that? How we've brought professional sports here in a big way besides the women's basketball, the N C A A Women's Basketball Tournament that's coming back, thank goodness? And in the middle of that, you had the H B Bathroom Bill, which affected and turned it kind of upside down with our women's basketball, because I love the women's basketball. And so we, you know, they moved everything out of town because of that. And, but now we've got it back. It's coming back, right?
Well, but it's also going to go to another site. So the, it'll be going to someplace in Georgia?
Yeah, a suburb of Atlanta next year, but it will undoubtedly be back here soon and it's a rightful home as it was last year.
Okay, so we also got, we also got the Carolina Cowboys, the professional bull riding. As soon as they mention it, because sometimes I, I listen to the city council meeting, because it's really interesting to do that.
You know what? Let me, let me add, because people don't always appreciate the Coliseum complex. And, and let me tell you, there's no bigger hero for that complex than sitting beside me. She saw the need and the vision of what that place could do. We are 300,000 people in Greensboro. 300,000. To have a $500 million Coliseum complex i- is unheard of. In fact, if it wasn't there today, we would never be able to get the bonds passed to build a $500 million Coliseum in a 300,000 person city. This is the kind of facility that's in million plus facility cities in terms of population. So not only to be proud about it, but understand back in 1959, when it was originally built, you know, someone else had the vision of what that place could do and what it could do for economic development, that it could bring in for conventions and all the things. That's what looking forward and having leaders that can look forward, how, how important it is.
Yes, and, and with the, a figure skating championship in 2011, it brought 160,000 people to Greensboro. All of this is bringing people to Greensboro. And in 2024, downtown Greensboro recorded 9.3 million visits and supported over 485 million in completed projects in the last decade. I mean, really, that's remarkable to be having.
Yeah, that's not a pie in the sky. For, for, don't get upset, but we track your cell phones, okay? It's, it's a real science. And, you know, when, when someone lives down there or works down there, obviously it's repeated. So we had total visits of 9.3 million, which surpassed Friendly Shopping Center and the shops at Friendly, okay? Surpassed it. But then when you back off and just do what we call visits, single visits, pinged one time, not pinged twice because you live there, you work there, but just a visit. In 2024, it was 1.8 million people came downtown for the, for, for one time, okay? I mean, it's, again, more than Friendly Shopping Center. That's why, that's why when, when the companies are coming now to talk to Mayor Vaughn about, tell me about your workforce, tell me about your education, tell me about your water and sewer, tell me about your airport. Now they're asking, tell me about your downtown.
Yeah.
It's become a box that's got to be checked.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you for that.
One of the things we, my wife Cora and I, we have relatively young children, 12 and 14.
Speak closer to the microphone.
I was saying, my, my wife and I, Cora, have relatively young children, 12 and 14. The 14-year-old is taking civics now. And one of the things I've been discussing with him is city government and kind of all the wonderful things you see in our community and other communities. What I try to encourage him to do is, because I want him to learn how to think for himself and not just say, dad likes this thing, that is inherently good, is what do you want in the community? The reality is that city government makes decisions with limited resources that increase the likelihood of certain things happening and by extension, other certain things not happening. And so, you know, especially this election season, I think that that's important for all of us to think about, you know, because, you know, I really love downtown. I love certain things in our community. That doesn't mean that that's necessarily something that you would love, that you would appreciate, that you would want the city to put their resources towards. And so it's a, you know, as we talk about this kind of litany of different things, it's also an opportunity to think about what is the type of community that we want? What are the types of things that we want? And correspondingly, recognize that it's oftentimes the city council, other leaders that we elect that really have a direct impact on how our community looks, how it operates. Because ultimately, with all the things that the city does and it accomplishes, it, it uses limited resources to do it. And so it's important, and what I try to encourage our son to do is like, think about the opportunity cost in that. You know, because the reality is, I mean, I guess oftentimes we don't say this in government, if you have like a hundred million dollars and you spend it on a public project, there's going to be some sort of good that comes from the project. But that doesn't answer the question as to whether or not it's the good that you want to see or the actual good that's conferred on the community is commensurate with the investment. And so, you know, lots of wonderful projects, many of which I would contend are really, really positive for our community. But notwithstanding that fact, you know, I encourage people like, think critically about opportunity costs, their own vision, their own priorities, because what you think is terrific may be different from what elected officials think is terrific. And that's why we have elections.
And tell your city council members if there's something you're interested in. You know, a call to them is a wonderful idea. Don't forget, you can look it up online, you know, what district you're in. And once you know the district that you're in, then if you've got a great idea, call them. I mean, Justin, you used to have Java with Justin.
That's right.
Remember?
That's right, that's right.
And people would come to talk to you about their ideas, right?
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So we had an opportunity to talk with community members, you know, before every single council meeting. And the views, as you would expect in a community of, I guess, about 300,000 are wide and vast. The prioritization differs a whole lot. And so, you know, the way our community looks and can look is not a set thing. You have different people making decisions around a table. There can be different outcomes. And so that's both an exciting thing, a scary thing, but it's always an important thing. And ultimately, you all, all of us as a community, determine who those persons that make those decisions and get those outcomes that hopefully all of us will enjoy at least.
And what he's saying is please vote in November.
That's a much better way of pointing, please vote.
This is really important to vote. Only 10% of the city voted for, in the primary.
That's right.
And this time, five of the nine members are leaving. You know, we're losing our mayor, I'm very sad about, but anyhow. We're losing Goldie Wells in District Two. We're losing Nancy Hoffman in District Four. We're losing, we've lost Yvonne Johnson, a blessed memory as at large. Mary Kay Boosier was the other at-large candidate, and now she's running for mayor, so we've lost that. What's the other one that I've left out?
No, you got it.
I got them all? I got them all? So that's 50% of the council that's turning over. I, I'm hoping that some of the ones that have been on the council will be reelected so they will add to some direction, because it's very hard, I would think, as a new person coming on the council, Justin.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, at, at the moment where your constituent calls and says, I've got a problem, you've got to figure out, how do you find the right person to help you with that?
Yeah, and, and my goodness, I remember when I first joined the council, there's so much opportunity to work on so many different things. That's where it makes a real big difference in terms of the persons that you elect, because you only have a finite amount of time. And so what they think is important, how they choose to engage with staff and city government, it's, it's a really big deal. You know, do they think that housing is important such that they're going to work towards housing, use some of their political capital to get things done towards housing? Or do they not really regard housing as a high priority, but instead they focus on traffic concerns?
Or safety.
Or, or safety, or, or any number of topics. It has a great effect on ultimately what the council votes on, the action that gets taken. And so, yeah, you're, it's very mellow, maybe.
Okay, so now I'm going to talk about the unforeseen events that happened during this time, okay? So you had a tornado in 2018 and that destroyed 1,000 homes. You were there then, Justin. You remember that? You had a snowstorm, 12 inches of snow. And then all of a sudden, 2020 comes and we have this thing called COVID that came along, you know? And city council had to act accordingly. So can you tell us a little bit about what it was like in March of 2020?
So what I remember is the ACC men's basketball team was in town. And every morning, we would meet with the Coliseum staff and the ACC. And first day of the tournament, we were sitting and John Swafford was saying, we're going to play this tournament, don't worry about it, we're going to go forward with it. I think that afternoon, I think that afternoon, the NBA might have decided that they were going to stop playing. So the next morning, we meet and they say, okay, we're going to play this tournament, but we're going to play it without fans. And we're like, okay, we're still going to give you a great, great tournament. We also had these fans in town that we had to make sure that, many of them couldn't leave, the flights were all messed up, and we wanted to make sure that they were still having a good fan experience, even though they couldn't be in the Coliseum. And then the next day, we met and they were like, yeah, we're not going to finish, we're just going to give Florida State the trophy and go home. And so that was, you know, up until that point, you know, I'd heard the word pandemic. I never really, I think, imagined that it would come to our country, that it would impact the city of Greensboro the way that it did. It was very difficult. I know that the mayors across North Carolina, I was chair of the North Carolina Metro Mayors. We spent a lot of time listening to the medical professionals and deciding what we were going to do and, you know, would there be a stay-at-home order? Governor Cooper, I think, did a good job in letting every city decide for themselves, because every city is different. And the major cities are a lot different than the rural communities. And he knew that it was not a one-size-fits-all. But it took an awful lot for us to decide what a stay-at-home would look like. You know, would we do the same thing again? Probably not. I think we've learned a lot from that, but we made decisions based on the medical professionals that we had at the time. I, so I stand by the decisions that we made. But in some ways, we're still recovering from it. We see our kids are lagging behind in school. I'm frustrated as heck because I want everybody to come back to work and people are used to working from home. And I think you're a much better worker when you're in the office. So it was, it was a really surreal experience and you were a part of that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Surreal captures it very well. Captures it very well. It was also amazing to see kind of our community come together, albeit oftentimes virtually, you know, during that period, which ultimately, as we all know, ended up being far longer than I think we had initially expected. So definitely a trying time, but it.
Yeah, the two-week shutdown. Two weeks, two weeks to stop the spread.
Yeah. But all, but ultimately, it was an opportunity, I think, for our com, our community to really shine.
That, it was a crazy time. It was, that word Zoom came up, you know, like where the, what the heck? I remember somebody calling me, I had just gotten on the zoning, and somebody called me and said, we're going to do a Zoom. And I said, okay. Could you, could you email me what that is? Will I be able to find it on? I'd never heard of that before, you know? How, and I had to have someone, you know, walk me through how to download Zoom, you know?
We were the first city in the state to do our meetings by Zoom. Other, other cities just stopped meeting. But we were able to figure out how to do the Zoom and we got back to, we had our council meetings much sooner than a lot of the other communities did. The boards and commissions started meeting by Zoom. So we tried to stop that. I will say, one of the funniest stories that I think, because we all love Yvonne, is we had a Zoom meeting and, you know, we were, had the Brady Bunch squares. And Yvonne was there and I saw she was smoking. And so I texted David Parish, who was the city manager at the time, and I said, David, Yvonne is smoking on screen. And he said, well, only Yvonne can do that. And so then somebody must have said to Yvonne, like, you're smoking on screen. So she stopped. But every now and then, you would see her go out of the square. And then the smoke would waft across the screen. So that is one of my memories. I think we, we could probably do a blooper reel of Zoom and like, if I ever hear, you're on mute. That's one thing I can just do without for the rest of my life.
That's amazing. All right, so in the same year, while, while the pandemic was happening, you know, the, what was it for? I was on the commission on the Status of Women and we did Equality Day. And we had gone back to the 1920 pandemic. Somehow that came up while we were developing. Somehow that came up while we were developing the program. So when it happened in 2020, I was like, oh my God, how the heck did they do it 100 years ago? But anyhow, so 2020, in May, you had the George Floyd protest here in Greensboro downtown, and some of it was peaceful, a lot of it was peaceful, but there was some vandalism and unrest and property damage. So talk to us a little bit about how that was.
Wow, that was, that was awful. You know, we could see things building across the country, and the very first day that we had, we had trouble, during the day, the protesters were really very organized, and it was going along, it was really going along really well. They were marching in the streets, but, you know, police were giving them water, and everybody seemed to be fine. They did make it out to the interstate, and they shut the interstate down for a while, but they, they really were actually working well with police at that point. Everybody got off the interstate. Some of the protesters, especially locally, started going home at that point, and I believe what happened is that we had a bunch of people coming from other places, and that's really when control kind of got, got lost. Things started heating up. I believe the police department did the best job that they could. I can't really explain, Brian James, who was our police chief at the time, was, explained to me that they were trying to keep kind of different fractions apart, and that they were, they had kind of created a barrier across Elm Street, and some of the protesters started picking up the ballasts, the big rocks that you see around the trains, and started throwing them at the police on the, on the street. But they did not want to break the line, because they were afraid at that point that they would lose complete control of downtown. There were some fires the second, the second night or both nights?
Yeah, certainly at least the second.
So we, it was, it was really, it was really difficult. We had talked that morning on whether, or the next morning, on whether or not we should do a curfew, and speaking with the city manager and the police chief at the time, they really felt that that was kind of a one-off, that we would be okay if there were more police downtown, and we could maintain more order. And we obviously made the wrong decision, because that night, the second night, was worse than the first night. That's when the mattress door burned, which they still think the mattress door was related to something else, and not necessarily the protests, but the governor had called Greensboro, Charlotte, Raleigh, Durham, and asked us if we wanted the National Guard, that he would ask the federal government to deploy the National Guard. I remember speaking to the police chief at the time, and he really said, you don't want the National Guard coming in, because they usurp the police department. And he said, and we know, we know the people, we know the activists, we know our community, we don't want to have to step back for the National Guard. Nobody in North Carolina took the governor up on his offer to deploy the National Guard if we wanted it, and I think that was the right choice. We did do a, I did institute a one-week curfew, which was very difficult, because businesses were just beginning to get back a little bit after COVID. The restaurants were beginning to open some of the smaller stores, and then to have to close them down at eight o'clock, that was difficult. I made everybody angry, which might mean I made the right decision, because. So we did a one-week curfew, and by the time the curfew was over, things had simmered out a little bit. We had some issues during the curfew about people not wanting to go home. But you know, when you've got something like that that you're faced with, which the country had really never been faced with before, there are times that it is just completely overwhelming.
It was, it was, it was worldwide.
It was.
I mean, we saw different countries marching for, about it.
Yes.
You know, it was everywhere. I loved the fact that the whole world came together and said, this is wrong, this is really wrong, and they came out during COVID.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things, again, that kind of interests me the most about situations like that are, communities have shared experiences in terms of dealing with, for many people, the first time, those issues being right in front of their faces, and them kind of having the mental or other bandwidth to really pay attention to it. But different communities respond in different ways, and that's oftentimes informed by the persons who are elected. And so you have communities that obviously choose not to have curfews, you have communities that choose to have curfews. You also have communities, I think we are one of them, that really lean in and try to address the issues that underlie the protests.
Yes.
Say, here's an opportunity for us to focus on what are the policies, the procedures, the processes that we can change to be more equitable, more open, more transparent, more fair, and so it's.
And that happened, and that happened. That happened, the Greensboro Police Department implemented reforms, including a revised use of force policy, and they increased community dialogue. I just want to say, I'm very excited to be here with these people, because in every category that you're seeing up there, they have created such change in the city of Greensboro that it's remarkable. So I don't want to focus terribly on this, but you know, just like you had a drought, okay, you know, they had COVID, you know, and, and George Floyd was something that, worldwide, you know, that was a moment that I don't think I'll ever forget. So I just want to move it on just a little bit more to talk about, you know, public transportation. Okay, so in terms of public transportation, we got a new transit department director, you know, and, and, and that was to, to support the growing workforce, or?
Well, it was because of a regionalism. We found out real quick that people were living in High Point, working in Greensboro, and going for recreation in Winston, that Burlington came into the mix. We, we realized we couldn't make decisions in a vacuum anymore.
Yeah.
That everything had to be done, thinking in terms of really a million people versus the 300,000 just in Greensboro. We, I guarantee you, Yvonne was working as much with the mayors of Burlington and Winston and High Point as anyone, a lot of her time, because that's what you've, you've got to do that today, and it's not going to get, but worse in the future, because you're not going to make a decision now that's not about Greensboro, that's not going to be thinking about, well, how's that going to work as we grow together with Winston and Curtisville and Burlington? What's, the explosion is coming. We all know it. We got saturated in Raleigh-Durham, and saturated in Mecklenburg, Charlotte, and it's just been coming up 85 and down 40, and guess where we sit? You know, right there in the crosshairs. So from a future perspective, oh my gosh, bigger decisions will be made.
Yeah, you're, you're poised right now for another surge of really fantasticness. I mean, you know, you're building a couple of hotels downtown that are part of, and have new parking decks, because you take care of public parking. This is not glamorous, what I'm talking about, but this, you know, when you come out of Tanger, you've got to park in a parking lot. If you go to the ballgame, you got to park in a parking lot. If you go to La Bauer for an event, or if you're, you know, we need parking lots, you know, for the folk, for everything that you've created, we need parking lots. So that was a little bit controversial. You know, you, you had, the city allocated $4 million, $2 million to design each of the new ones that are coming, and then you allocated $30 million for each to occur, and they're now, and that was done in 2017, and they're now about to be opened. So there's a long time between your idea of what we'll do, the next step, and, and I want you to talk just a little bit about, you know, that you, you kind of launched something, it's like you're sending your child to school and hoping that they'll, you know, prosper and whatever, but, you know, I don't know the analogy.
We, you know, we knew we needed parking downtown, but you don't want to build kind of a, just a parking deck with nothing around it. So one thing that we wanted to do was, if there was a big project that we could build a parking deck with it, that that would be the time to do it. So of course, the Weston Hotel, we built the parking deck, the hotel's a little behind schedule. We built the other parking deck over by the ballpark. Roy Carroll did, he just put in his building permits, he's going to be building an AC hotel right by that parking deck, and then start his plans. It was really good we built those parking decks, because we've had to take two down. The Bellmead Deck, as you saw, if you've been downtown lately, is no longer there. I'll tell you, D.H. Griffin has done an amazing job there, so far ahead of schedule, it's, it's hard to believe. And then the Davy Street Parking Deck will come down in the next couple of months. So it's really fortunate that we have these two parking decks, because we had to take down two other parking decks, and the reasons why we had to take them down was because when, had to do with the way the cement was cured when they were building those parking decks. And if you recall, in Miami, I believe, there was a condominium, that kind of pancake, and it was Tammy Thurm who suggested to city staff that we take a look at our buildings to make sure that they were all sound, and because of that, they found that there were issues in two of the parking decks. And we tried to shore them up in a whole bunch of different ways, and it did have to do with the curing at the time, and then the reports that we got were that it's going to be safer to take them down, and that was a really tough decision for the city council to make, because did Bellmead have 900 spaces in it?
That sounds quite right, yeah.
I mean, that.
And a lot of persons who are employed by organizations, corporations use that deck throughout the day.
Yes, yes, and Java with Justin was.
Oh yeah, Java with Justin location there.
Yes, there was. So it was a hard decision to take it down. It would have been really bad had we not had those two other parking decks. In downtown, the city is responsible for, for parking. In other places of the city, the people who build the buildings, they're responsible for, for parking. It's a little different in downtown. So it's, you know, anybody who's driven downtown will say it's been really hard getting around these last couple of months. I think we're approaching the end, because there's been a lot of road construction, and then, of course, the, the decks.
Yep, so I just want to mention two other things before I ask you the final question, okay, which you'll enjoy answering. But public safety is a really important issue in this election. You know, people are concerned about public safety, and I think that as a council, you've kind of created some sound beginning conversations with the community safety department, you know, and that includes the Behavioral Health Response Team and the Law Enforcement Assistant diversion. And could you talk a little bit about how terrific those programs are? Because I think they're really amazing, they're really helping assist the police to, to help our residents in need.
So the Behavioral Health Response Team really was a result of the Marcus Smith death. We were, as a council, and Justin was on council at the time, looking for ways that we could better interact, kind of reimagining policing. And one thing that we all recognize is that police officers, they're not trained to work with people who are having mental health issues or addiction issues, that they really need clinicians, and they need after-care follow-up. So the Behavioral Health Response Team, right now, we only have nine. I will say that the police chief will be the first to say that he wishes that we could grow that, and I think we will over the years. And I got to see firsthand about three weeks ago, the way that the Behavioral Health Response Team works. I was in Country Park, and I noticed that there was a man on the ground, he had an infant, there were some people around him, and he was absolutely bereft. He had had a fight with his wife, his wife told him to get out of the house, take the baby. He really didn't know what he was, what he was going to do. He, he was undocumented, he meant his, he met his wife here on vacation, he's from Jamaica, he was a police officer in Jamaica, he moved here, they got married, they had a baby, and the wife decided that she was going to tell Homeland Security that their marriage was a sham, and she wanted out of it. And he, he didn't have a job, he had this wonderful little baby, he didn't know what he was going to do with the rest of his life, and he was on the path at Country Park, and this poor man, you could see, had no hope in his future. And I, I called Andrea, and she got the Behavioral Health Response Team to come out, and they, they really worked with him to try to find a solution to his problem. And in the meantime, they were able to get diapers for the baby, and food, and take care of him, and so he called family in Pittsburgh, and they were going to be able to get him to Pittsburgh. You may have heard that, you know, downtown Greensboro and some other places have been able to reunite families, and to see it in action, I mean, it really is a good thing. People have tried to paint it as something else, but he was going to go live with a cousin. Behavioral Health Response, NGPD, went to his apartment, his wife was there, he was able to get his belongings. They had two cars, they were both in her name, because he couldn't have a car in his name. She ended up giving him one of the cars and the baby. And Beheart was able to work with him, got him funding so that he'd be able to drive the car up there, made sure he had everything he needed, and to see a man go from absolutely no hope, figure that he was going to have to leave the baby behind, but to know that he was going to be reunited with his family, it was amazing. And to see the way that the Beheart Team, NGPD, worked with him was really something very, very special, and I don't think that was unusual. I think it happens every day, we just don't hear about it. And so that was, I think, one of the best things that has come out of it.
Thank you for telling that story.
We had a lot of occasions like that in downtown. If you've been downtown, you probably crossed paths with an unsheltered or homeless individuals, and we've made great headway. We hired an ambassador group that works every single day, trying to place people, get them in treatment centers, get them connected to their families and things of that nature, which is interesting, because if you looked at that sheet, you, you saw the difference between what city council members do and what the county does, which is more of the human side of things. They take care of the physical health, the mental health, the education. It's, we wish we could actually have a better relationship with our county, support people, the social service groups, to help us, but it's not happened, and I'll just say it publicly, it's not, the relationship is not what it should be. So the citizens who, who vote for the city council members and the city staff, we've had to take on duties that would normally be applied to the county to take over, because it's got to be done. And to me, that's what makes me the most proud, because we've got a city police department, a fire department, a downtown group that says, we got a problem, we're going to fix it, even if it's not being handled by organizations that are really charged with it.
And that's a perfect lead-in to the pallet homes.
Yep.
Which is something, you know, that project, to bring in these collapsible homes, that took, I don't remember the first number, I think it was, was it 60 people in the first number, and 17 of them found housing? You know, and it's, and then you've got the RVs, you know?
Five this year.
Five this year, and they continued it from the winter, so they took people who were living on the street in the wintertime and housed them. What a godsend that is, and no one in the state was really doing that, you know?
No, we've had a lot of people come and look at these pallet shelters, and the Department of Insurance has kind of this funky rule that the pallet shelters can only be up for six months, and then you have to take them down. Now, you could run down the street and put them back up, and they get another six months, which is in essence what we're doing, we're moving from one location to, to another, so for the last two years, they've been up all year. So for the last two years, they've been up all year long, but, um, they have to be in a different spot. So this this winter, there will be, um, I believe, a hundred and twenty people at Pomona Park. And I believe that the number, the IRC provides the case management. And I believe the number that I've been told is that eighty percent of the people who go through the pallet shelters end up in traditional housing somewhere. So that is, um, that is really good.
That's a, that's a, that is a, but it's another example about how these members of city council have created cutting edge ideas that across the country, people are beginning to see. So I I want to thank you for that. And I want to just ask you the final question. So, um, and and where is it? It was, what was one of your proudest moments? And we'll start with, who wants to go first? Whoever wants to go. What was one of your, you know, you've you you did a lot of things and, you know, there must have been one moment where you thought, wow, I've really, you know, satisfied something inside me that made me decide to be a leader and get paid, what is it, twenty seven thousand dollars a year?
I get thirty-two.
Oh, you get thirty-two?
I got thirteen.
You got thirteen to be mayor.
You see where they gave themselves raises.
So I just, any moment that you will always remember and it doesn't necessarily have to be your proudest, but
Yeah, we we had, uh, and I'll talk about the International Civil Rights Museum. That was a, um, a war wars. It was, um, uh, it was owned by First Citizens Bank. The building was, uh, which coincidentally was where I was working. And of course, a vision, uh, with Skip Austin and Earl Jones and and a bunch, and a lot of other people, not just those two, decided that, you know, this was such an incredible, uh, point in history with February first, nineteen sixty, that we just couldn't let it be torn down for a parking lot. And there was a lot of controversy about it and it took a lot of money to make it happen. But I was real proud that the city stopped, stepped up, uh, funded a lot of it and pushed for the fundraising aspect and created the opportunity for that building to be built, uh, renovated, rather, and to the museum. And today, today, it's one of the real hotspots for downtown. I think there's somewhere in the neighborhood of close to three hundred thousand, mostly school kids, that are coming to learn about that important, uh, point in history. But it happened, uh, sort of in the time, they they ended up, after I got out of office, the very next year, I believe, was when it was opened in, um, oh, eight or oh, nine, I believe.
Yeah.
And, uh, that was a pretty special moment.
Oh, um, you know, my mom had a friend who used to sit at the counter with Shirley, Shirley Fry. So, you know, I I remember as being little and hearing the stories. But thank you for that. It, we are so lucky to have it. Madam Mayor.
Proud, that's a, that's a really tough one. You know, there are a lot of things that I'm proud of that happened in the city. But when I think of the things that probably will stick with me the the longest aren't necessarily the good things. The tornado was, um, something that I will always remember. Went out the night of the tornado with the police chief. It was incredibly dark because there was no electricity. There was no anything. We went back first thing the next morning and it really felt like being on a movie set. The devastation was something like I had never seen before. And, you know, you saw people who were obviously in shock, but so glad to be alive. And we were very fortunate. There was one fatality somewhat related to the tornado. And there were very few serious injuries. And for the next few weeks, um, I spent at Peeler Recreation Center. And so that is something that I will always remember. And then the other one was when we lost the five children in the fire on Conan Summit. And, um, I got to know their parents really well and ended up going to, um, to Uganda to see the refugee center that they came from. And, um, the mother had spent eighteen years in the refugee center. The father spent twenty-two years before they finally came to the U S. So when you talk about the path to citizenship, there really, there really isn't one. They were in their early thirties when they, when they lost those children. They've had two children since then. But those are the things that, um, really will sit with me probably more than the boom and the Toyota.
Thank you.
So each of us can do really wonderful things in our communities, volunteering, helping out our neighbors. What's so unique about being an elected official is that you can change policy and systems to help people on scale. So I volunteer a lot now, oftentimes help five, ten people. As a council member, you could create a policy that helps fifty thousand people in one fell swoop. And so the thing that I'll remember or that I do remember the most, um, that I'm really proud of is early on in my time on the city council, I had come from volunteering for a housing-related city volunteer board. Essentially, being the body that made an ultimate decision. Your property is in substandard condition. What are we going to do? Two options at the time, really. We're going to essentially condemn it, put it on a list for demolition. And if you're not able to make the repairs and we don't want to have it for a demolition list, it's going to sit in substandard condition and be a blight upon our community. And, um, we joined, I joined the council, we kind of examined it further. We developed a third way in which the city gained the power to, in certain instances, make repairs directly to the property, take a lean on the property, um, and the homeowner be responsible for it. And so I saw very quickly, just us making that change, even without exercising that power, did things like encourage the mortgage holders of properties to pressure property owners that did have the resources to actually make repairs to their properties because the mortgage company was concerned about the city possibly coming in and taking a lean. And having seen the devastatingly bad conditions that many of our neighbors, especially children in our community, live in, like homes without floors, constant water coming through a home, being able to be a part of a movement to reduce, you know, the existence of housing conditions like that simply by changing a policy without spending any money, to me is just something I'm just really proud to have been a part of with Nancy and others on the council and kind of doing things like that and that being, you know, the example that really stands out in my mind.
That's lovely. Thank you so much. All right. So I'm just going to close this down by saying thank you, all of you. Their story was really incredible. I'm so glad that you came and and we heard it. And I I'd just like to say, um, what you have done, we won't forget. So thank you for all your service. And I want to, and I want to just thank Temple Emmanuel and of course AAUW, the American Association of University Women. It's a fantastic organization. If you don't know anything about it, look up AAUW online and you'll be surprised. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. I prefer that anyway. This was fun.